The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take world call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Candace?
Here.
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Angelo?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am here, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have support?
Support.
Mr. Wamsley?
In your packet, you'll notice the personnel report. Mary Mattis, Secretary of the High School, submitted her resignation letter. Jogi Schroeder submitted her retirement letter effective at the end of the school year. Brayley Mother submitted her letter of resignation as a secretary. And Miranda Vigaki submitted her resignation letter effective at the end of the school year. Termination, there are three employees listed as termination. They're currently COVID aids for the building, which you did them the notice. If you recall from Esser money, the COVID aids are only through the second year of the death of $30, so we would need to notify them of their termination. New hires Dalton Gilroy, BM custodian. Linda Noack Owen, the one chief supervisor. And the third person listed, I'm going to remove from the list. Over the weekend, she notified us that she took a position in another district. Appointments of previously hired positions by the board. Brett Bird ascended his resignation letter, so we will be pointing him back as the middle school track coach. I receive no errors to the regular Board of Education meeting minutes from April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
No, other than I'll change, amend my emotion, my motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendment to the personnel report.
I support it, yep.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. Candace, I'll start at your turn. Is there anyone you wish to acknowledge?
Yes, I did want to give a shout out to the Blue Devil Cafe for wonderful service that I had for lunch this week on Thursday. And I know it was their opening day and they were excited to serve all of us that were there. And the service was great, the food was great, great portions, sizes, and just shout out to them, they did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
Yes, I have first, Mrs. Michon and I attended the all-county academic banquet, so I wanted to give a shout out to Nathan Peer, who was our all-county academic student from Richmond. Kudos to him for his hard work and being able to represent Richmond for that, it was pretty exciting. And I also have a huge rave, as you guys know, I went this weekend to Washington DC to watch our We the People students and truly, truly, one of the best experiences that I personally have had, not only as an aunt, but as a Richmond graduate and Richmond person. Our kids were absolutely amazing. While they did not make it into the top 10 to compete today, they'll find out at the end of the week where they did in the 48 schools that were there. But things, things were pretty intense. They got some pretty intense questions. There were federal judges, circuit judges, lawyers, law professors, I mean, just, it was just really, really cool and our kids held their own. So a shout out to Dr. Ladd, because without him, that program wouldn't be there. And his leadership with those kids is just amazing. And the respect, I talked about the respect that he got at Michigan State. What he got over the weekend was pretty amazing, too. But he just does a great job with those kids. And for the 16 kids that went, they should be very proud of themselves because they made us look really, really good. And I want to shout out, I know they're not employees, but Mrs. Pendry, Mrs. Albers, and Mr. Bergeron were the three parent chaperones that went and they were as exhausted, if not more so than the kids, for all the things that they were able to do and the tours that the kids were doing. So thank you for them for taking five days out of their time to help our kids have an experience of a lifetime.
Kelly? Yeah, I wanted to throw a shout out to Coach Evans. I know it's coming up, it hasn't happened yet, but through the baseball season, he, every year, so I'm deeply seated in the Little League, but every year he does a Big Brothers Day, so I believe it's this Friday coming up, without checking my phone, I don't remember exactly, where some of the Little League boys actually come out onto the field before the varsity game and they get to stand with their matching player. And I know my son did it last year and I know the kids get such a kick out of that and just, you know, being with their high school buddy and, you know, getting to chat with them and everything like that. So I think that's a really good program that Mr. Evans does and I hope to see that continue in the future because I know the kids absolutely love that. And I've heard even the high school kids, when they help with, this is just how the Blue Devils are, I really think, the high school kids, when they help with the summer things with Coach Evans, it's all volunteer. And one of the kids last year said, well, this is where I came from, of course I'm going to give back and teach these kids because this is, this is where I came from and this is what I do. And it's just amazing how he's helped develop such young, strong, considerate young men through the program, the baseball program. So I just wanted to thank him for that.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge Kathy Campo one more time. We attended, Mrs. Taltown and I and Mr. Wamsley attended the teacher award ceremony down at the Mirage. She was honored with the middle school all-county, that's the county teacher for the whole county. And she's, it was really, it was really neat because what they did was when they introduced the, all the winners, they gave quotes from what kids said about them. And there were just some that were pretty amazing and you sit and you listen to that and I think we have a phenomenal staff in this county. They're doing some really, really good things, so it was really cool. Angela?
Yes, I have a shout out, I would like to recognize Mrs. Jermaine for taking the extra time and effort to email parents to keep us informed on students that may have missing assignments or upcoming assignments or finals. And that has been helpful in my household and I think it may be helpful if, you know, if you have the time, I know it's, we have the power school, but an extra email always helps, so I would like to thank her for that.
Thank you. Sandy?
Just real quickly, just want to say congratulations and thank you to Ms. Schroeder for all her time here as a teacher in this district. That's it.
Thank you. Danielle?
I'll go the teacher route as well. I wanted to say thanks to Mrs. Lombard and, we can't talk, Mrs. Lombard and Mrs. Manguni. We had some issues with Jackson last week and they were super supportive and very, very helpful. And it could have gone different ways, but they, they did an amazing job giving cuddles and hugs and helping out, so it was perfect.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is our presentation, starting off with our business and operational. Mr. Wamsley?
Okay, tonight, tonight starts our first of a series of budget conversations for the FY '24. As we start this process, the first part, we want to make sure everybody is at least familiar with and grounded is how the budget is established or the functions. So in your packet, you will see a copy of the actual, the actual budget amendment number two that you approved in March. Within that budget amendment number two, you'll see in there that I asked Tammy to add the function codes to that budget. I'm going to put it up here in just a second. So oftentimes as a board, you are, you not only do you get the AS400, but mostly we focus on the 30,000 foot level. And what you're going to see is our total budget of revenue, where that was amended is over $22 million, which is, which is a significant amount of money that the taxpayers have entrusted to us. And that, for every dollar of revenue, we typically have a dollar of expense that's associated with that. I'm not going to get into the weeds in terms of the different various brands and what account number, because each of the function codes may have brands that are within them. But in general, we break the budget into multiple, what are called function codes. So everything associated to elementary school, which in this case, the budget that you approved was over $2.8 million for just the elementary school. This includes not only teacher's salary, but it also includes lunch aids in this, it also includes supply accounts, as you can see, purchase service, if we do any large projects such that we have to come out of capital outlay, again, health insurance, retirement costs, et cetera, and the other benefits. This would also be a category that if a teacher had a misprep for the contract language, we pay them a certain dollar value for missing their prep and compensation for that time. Function 112 goes into the middle school, again, the similar expenses, and 113 is high school. The one big difference, and it's really not a big difference, is in 112 and 113, you have state, a budget for state tournaments. So for instance, choir band or anything academic that goes on to state competitions would fall under 112 and 113 depending on the level. But again, it's the salaries of teachers, it's the salaries of lunch aids, it's the salaries, benefits. And just a rough reminder, for every dollar that we pay out in a payroll, we pay another 50 cents in retirement and taxes that are applied to that. 118 is the preschool, so when we're talking about making amendments or any changes to preschool, this is where it would fall. There's over $711,000 in preschool expenses. This is not only the paid tuition, but it's also GSRP program falls in that. Summer school, this is the budget that usually is amended, it'll probably be amended one more time as we get closer to the end of the year, as we prepare for the final summer school budget. Again, it's the salaries and benefits that are associated and supplies. Special education falls under 122, this would be your resource room teachers particularly and CI, cognitively impaired classrooms, and some care professionals depending on their, what they're servicing. 125 is called at risk, Title I, which is all your Title 31A individuals. Oftentimes we will use purchase services if we're purchasing a program for credit recovery, it falls under this aspect. A lot of these dollars are grant related, so whatever revenue we're getting, the expenses typically tied to it in this function. 127 is over $600,000 in vocational education. This is where we charge our EMT program, our TV production program, Teacher Cadet program, AIS, et cetera. Just some of these are purchase services, some of them are salaries because we, purchase services are the contracts we have with, which is EMT, AIS, that we pay them for these services. All these are salaries such as the Teacher Cadet, the business and marketing, et cetera. And there's associated supplies in capital outlay projects in these. So from an instructional end, which is the bulk of our budget, is $11.7 million of expenses.
Brian?
Yes?
For the summer school, is the, the food included in there, the lunches and the breakfast? Is that part of?
If we're paying a lot of grant dollars, it would be in the 125, Tammy, function code. 125 is typically your 31A and your Title I. If it was a general fund, I mean, it's all general fund, but if it's, if it's expenses that we're not charging to grant and it's four-essential, then it would fall under that function code.
Okay. Thank you.
Guidance counseling, we have three counselors that are on the books, if you will. This is where those services and individuals would be charged, as well as any purchase services, supplies, et cetera, that are allocated to those areas. 213, in your budget or in your packet, you'll see a narrative. It's, it's a good review, if you will, of the different function codes, it kind of gives you the broad characteristics. 213 is health services, which might be contracting for any types of, you can see under the health services. This, Tammy, is the...
It's for student cares.
So this is the cares program that we pay for, for students and parents that have access to. Thank you. Psychological services, 214, contracted service, those are typically when we need them for a student that's being looked at for IEP services. Speech and audiology services, our speech and language, instructors, instructors come out of this, this function. Social workers and at risk, part of our social workers, we have on the books that we have three social workers, we currently have two, but one-third of them are paid out of non-grant dollars, the other two-thirds are paid out of Section 31A money. And we've been doing that for many years for the social workers. Teacher consultants are paid out of 218. It's important to realize that some of these special education positions, you might be part of the day a teacher consultant, part of the day a researcher, so your salary will be charged to two different function codes depending on the amount of time you have. Other pupil services, this is primarily where all the non-athletic Schedule Bs are charged, this is where the robotics is charged, and any additional expenses that might be needed in the auditorium for productions and so forth. Improvement of instruction is primarily substitutes and part of different various people who are providing support for the administrators and teachers, obviously to improve instruction. Library, these are where our media paracros are paid out of from the, any to the building, as well as any supplies and any benefits that are associated with those. Technology addresses, the IT department. As well as there are some purchase services such as our licensing for some of our technology that we use in the district. 226 is improvement of instruction or supervision of instruction, this is primarily where the Director of Curriculum, the Student Support Services, as well as some of the other supplies and benefits that are associated with those. Academic student testing, this is primarily where some of our NDA and our softwares that we use for progress monitoring are charged to. Board of Education, when you look at that expense, it's, obviously that's not a salary piece in the board, you know, they could pay, but it's a lot of the purchase service for our attorney fees and some of the other MSBOA, et cetera, that we, that we charge these to, that we, that we service. Executive administration, which would be the superintendent's office and those that are tied to the superintendent's office. Office of principal is not only the principals of each building, but also the dean of students in each building, as well as the secretaries in each building, and then anything that is tied benefit wise to that. Business office, it's exactly what it says, it's paid office, it's some of the individuals in the central office that are tied to the business, such as payroll and accounts payable. 259, our other business services, this is a variety, I misspoke, legal services is in here, not into the board account, my apologies. Retirement incentives, that we might do a, if there was in the past, we've had incentives that we've paid individuals to retire or leave the district earlier than what they might have done. That would be those retirement incentives. Our insurance premiums, any election costs, we could build back if there's something on the ballot, whether it's renewal or a portion of it. Summer tax collections, this would be, sometimes we don't always get all the taxes we collect through the government, so. For many years, we had the interest here from the state aid note that we would have to borrow money until we, all the payroll and the state aid payments catch up. Couple of years ago, at the district, we switched to page per month, and that allowed us not to have to borrow money to create payroll, as well as building up the fund balance, so you had the dollars in your fund balance. So that was a significant savings that we have accomplished over several years.
Brian?
Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely.
The retirement incentive payments, we have some left?
We have one.
Is that one, one left and that we paid off this year?
Yes.
Yes, correct? Okay.
So when we build a budget, that, that will be an expensive goal, right?
Right.
Operation and maintenance, this over the last year has switched from a very large purchase service, which is oftentimes well over a million dollars, to more of a split between salaries and purchase services. These are all our in-house custodians we brought back, any healthcare, retirement benefits associated to that. Just as a quick glance on that, if you look at, we budget about $587,000 for custodians and payroll, and we have almost 350, almost more than half of it in the healthcare and retirement benefits that are associated. And then you add on top of that FICA, Medicare, workers' comp, insurance, et cetera, you can see where, when we take into consideration raising the salary, there are other costs that we have to also take into consideration. Purchase services, we do a lot of our software, contracted services, this is our heating and cooling that you do every June, we have a contract we issue for them to come out regularly check our heating and cooling, we contract with several companies, such as Wagner Plumbing for plumbing issues, et cetera, because we don't have an in-house plumber. And then general supplies, which would be for, as things need to be repaired or fixed or replaced, that's where they would come from.
Utilities are included in supplies as well?
Thank you. Utilities are often, so we have our electrical, you have gas, et cetera. So when we have a warm winter, the gas dollars don't get spent, but when we have a very cold winter, we watch that. And when you get into transportation, see the fuel cost. Purchase services for security, you'll see that this is a significant, large portion at the moment. We still have, and it's going to come at the next board meeting, our conversation about Section 97 for next year. Currently, this year, we purchased that, we've existed crisis alert badges, which you can see these in the, I know there's a white stroller up here and so forth throughout the district. The night locks and all that got charged there because we're purchasing that server for them to install. But that will be a conversation in the future board meeting, we're going to talk about what do we want to do with those $97, assume they're approved in the budget for next year, Section 97. Transportation, some of their salaries that are in there, that's not only bus drivers, but also mechanics, directors, some of the salaries we do get reimbursed from other districts, so the full salary is charged here, but the reimbursement is in the revenue side of the equation at the very top. Communications, student, there's some marketing materials with the GSRP program that are in here, that we also use to market.
Brian?
Yes?
Sorry, can you go back to that, the security one, please? Sorry, it took me a minute to think of my question. So that, that dollar amount, you're saying that's what we've, that's what we've spent on this stuff? The, the badge things and all of that?
The door badges and night locks and I think there's some supplies, cameras that have been purchased in there, we've been charged.
So then conversation for next year is if additional monies from that, what we would do with that money, security wise, is that what you're saying?
Correct, because that a large chunk of those dollars is...
Goes away.
...will be spent, spent, and we will have either, we can continue doing purchase services, or we could look at if we want in-house people.
Okay.
You know, under the security.
Okay. Thank you.
Or it could be improvements to the operations.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
One other question for that account, the liaison officers that we...
Liaison officer is paid out of this account, too, right? And the fortune, that's paid out of 31A, that portion of the liaison officer, but it's charged under here.
Right.
Thank you.
So the expense, if you were, Tammy, you were magic on the computer, all the expenses charged to 31A, you're going to see expenses come out of 266, 125, various function codes where they're charged, but the revenue is all, all equal to revenue.
Thank you.
Transportation, at the, I believe on the May 8th, and I'll go over that at the end kind of, some of the conversations coming up, we will have the conversation about the two-tiered bus system as a possible conversation, there's some other options that we are looking at to consider that might not be as expensive, but just in general, we'd be looking at, you know, some of these salaries though is charged here, we get reimbursed, whether it's through GSRP for transportation, or field trip cost, or some other things, et cetera. But we've got some options for transportation that we're going to bring to you or at least consider, as we've been trying to get fully staffed in our transportation department. A good chunk of these salaries is the director and the mechanic, I shouldn't say good chunk, a portion of that is the director and the two mechanics. And that, just for everybody's sake, one of the mechanics, we get reimbursed 75% from New Haven. So if we didn't continue that, we'd have to absorb 75% of his salary or come up with another alternative.
Do we share our director?
We also share 50% of the director's salary is refunded by New Haven, we share director with New Haven. 283, help me out, Tammy, if you want to pull through it. 283.
Does that support services that includes our HR director?
Thank you. This is HR director with any cares program or anything that's associated with HR. This, this year, we moved to this category. In previous years, it's been, because the role is different, it's been located in other function codes. But anything related to HR fees, but you would approve the services, is all charged here. Support technical, 284, is this power school?
This is not instructional technology, so it's everything that runs the district that's not related directly to instruction. So get power school.
Support services, pupil accounting, this is where we moved the pupil accounting person to one, they came on board this year. So it's the, that aspect of it.
Brian, does the cost for power school ever change?
It has gone up, it's typically been pretty consistent. It went up last, last year, the first year they did the...
Because they did the, the updates for it, is that why we?
They, they didn't associate with the update, they've been trying to keep it consistent for districts, but they got to a point where they needed to raise it and I think it went up, it's like four, it was like eight dollars, excuse me, approximately eight dollars for make ISD's budget. If we were to buy a power school by ourselves, I think they quoted we'd be paying $11 to $12 per child.
Right. Okay.
The benefit of going to the ISD is you have all the services and support that the ISD provides. Athletics, is everything sports related? Any secretaries that are, a portion of secretaries that are charged here, Mr. Trent, the athletic director, a portion of his salaries charged, or any supplies that we have, capital projects would be large purchases. Purchase services are primarily your, your...
Officials.
Officials.
Helmets in there?
Helmets would be in there, any, any, any supplies that we have, we have 11,000, the helmets were under, I think they fell under the capital outlay project when we purchased them. purchased them. Last year, they arrived this year, so they got charged this year.
Does this budget include any of the updates we have been talking about in a sense of making sure everybody has equipment and uniforms? We haven't done any of that yet.
None of the supplies that would come into this one if the board chooses to do that one yet. When we looked at, I believe it was last year, we had roughly a supply list read sport.
Yes.
We did not increase-
Looking at that for our future.
Yes, that's.
But we're going where all that work that was done this is the year we're actually going to look at it to make sure the sports are, have what they need to function? Is that what you're saying? Because I thought that's what we did last year.
That would come up in, in the conversation after we, the next step in, in the budget would be, I'm going to bring to you, here's all the contracts that we are obligated to honor. So this budget, and I'm going to go over it in just a minute, is taking the assumption we're keeping everything as is and rolling it over.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. We, not contracts. When we talked about the whole, the whole process that started with Mr. Ryan Hart and was never finished, and then went to Mr. Trend, what does it cost to run each sport? Coaches put the information together, what do we need? That's what we talked about, line items to figure out so that each sport knew, or the school district knew, what it costs to run the sport. Remember?
Sure.
The basketball? That's what I'm talking about. That, that contract stuff. And we, so we didn't do it for this year.
So in the, in the process, that would be presented after we do our obligations first, before we look at adding something that's currently not in the budget.
Okay, but I guess, I guess I'm a little-
Isn't there already something in there?
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. I, I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought the conversation last year was we put that all together, we got the information, what did, what does each sports need to function? Because parents are putting so much money in and all of this. What does it cost to run each sport? So that wasn't put into this year. I don't, unless I'm mistaken, anyone else can speak up that was here last year and we talked about it. Where does that come into, well, after everything's done, then we'll see if that works? That's not how I remember.
I think for last year's budget, if I'm correct, we were going to see if we had extra to allocate. But I think with this year's budget, twenty-four, or twenty-three, twenty-four, we will have a discussion whether or not we want it permanently in there. Right? So I think it was if we had extra this year, then we could try to do something now. But for sure, we would discuss it at next budget talk. Am I mistaken? That's what I was thinking.
I'm not remembering it like that, obviously. But I certainly, if we're going to have a conversation budget-wise, I'm not interested in what's going to be, maybe going to be able to happen after. It's got to be part of running athletics. And that's what I thought, that the whole, that whole survey, that whole presentation, everything that we had, that's what I'm looking for.
I, I will predict this.
Okay.
If your assumptions hold true, which we're going to go into next-
Okay.
-you're not going to have enough money to do that. So you're going to have to then make, if you want to do it, we're going to have to make a decision to either reduce something-
Uh-huh.
-to put that in. And if you can hold that till when I get that, I think that will help with the frame of the reference in. But that would be part of, in what I was intending to roll out was, okay, here's, here's kind of just an overview of the budget. Let's go over enrollment assumptions and what we know we're getting on a per pupil basis as of today. When I show you that, you're going to have a certain dollar of extra revenue. Once you back out current contract obligations, it's going to leave you a certain dollar value left. That dollar value is nowhere near to that number that we talked about.
All in?
So that, that would be where, if that is the priority of the board, to put money in there to food close, or truly fund athletics, or closely fund athletics to what it truly costs, then we're going to have to either use fund balance or find a reduction somewhere else.
Okay.
If I had an idea on a reduction from somewhere else, would that be a talk now or for later?
Probably next meeting.
Okay.
And I, all I'm saying, and, and, you know, yes, I'm getting a little wrapped up, but all I'm saying is I really thought the conversation was, what does it take to run athletics? What does, what does each coach need for the sport? And if we're not truly providing, because we had the conversation, there are those coaches that want elite or-
Needs and wants.
Yes. Where, what is the basics to run each sport? To me, it's a simple question, and it should go in the process when we're talking about the budget for the school district. And I, I guess I, I feel bad that I thought that was already something that had started, and maybe I misunderstood at-
I think it's starting now.
-the last meeting. But I think we need to start it now. We're talking about how we're running our district. We have to look at everything, academics and athletics.
It will be part of the discussion as we do roll out the budget. Thirty-one, three-eleven and three-thirty-one are community education, which are usually your Title I nights and some of those activities that we do there. Care and custody of children is childcare. Three sixty-one, Tammy, I've drawn a blank on all of your activities. This is the homeless?
McKenney Vito.
This is McKenney Vito homeless. So we set a dollar value there so we can help families that are, that are considered homeless by definition and then support them.
And how does that dollar amount, how does that get figured that that's the dollar amount? Is that just like an average of what we?
There's a certain portion of Title I that is allocated.
Okay.
Sometimes it's based on the need that we're seeing.
Okay.
If Title I dollars are run out, then we would have to increase that through nine grand dollars.
So it's really each year what the need is?
Each, each year. That's typically what we, sometimes the, some of the things are to make sure students have capgras. Sometimes it's gas cards getting in to and from.
Right. Yep.
It is a variety of activities. Non-publics, the function code, three seventy-one. If you did not know, we do service private and parochial schools. So this would be the portion of dollars that are allocated for those staff members who service the private. The outgoing transfer, these are the lists of dollars that we are taking out of this budget and setting aside, your turf, your computers, your buses, et cetera, that we're setting aside a little bit each year so that when that replacement comes, we have the dollars there to replace it. So then that leaves about twenty-one million, almost twenty-two million in total expenses, which means that we were planned for twenty-eight thousand to be, a little over twenty thousand we put into fund balance at the end of this year. Now, I'll say this, as I said for many years, if you budget at home, hopefully, if you budget well, there's a little of everything left in counts at the end of the month, so you don't spend everything. So this is, this budget is assuming that all of these expenses are zeroed out. And if that's the case, we're going to put twenty-eight thousand dollars in to fund now. The reality is, it's not. There are things that, that we anticipate, a position that we might have that didn't get filled the whole year, so there's a portion of the salary left unspent. So that, your end bottom line will improve. Knock on wood, barring anything significant happening between now that would cause an over budget. But again, all these accounts, we should have dollars left. We haven't exhausted it completely. Any questions just on the overview of the budget? This is how Tammy builds the budget. Everything's got to be charged to one of these function codes, and our expenses at least have to equal our revenue to be a balanced budget. Our goal, much like everybody at home, is that our revenue, our income exceeds our expenses.
I just want to say thank you, Tammy, for doing this. This is very helpful.
So in your packet, I also provided you with just the state revenue codes. I'm not going to go through those, but there's a lot of function codes that the state addresses. It's just more informational to help you as a reference point. So now we actually get into the budget, and the first thing that all of our, pretty much all of our dollars come to is based on enrollment. One of the things that I wanted to, it's in your packet, but every year, Metro Bureau, and I don't think I've shared it the last couple of years, and I don't know why, but does a blended enrollment count, when you look at, they use a program called Immunetrix, which we have in the district, that will be, they kind of give you statistical analysis of how other districts compare. This is just looking at enrollment. So when you look at this document, and it's quite lengthy, they are looking at various counties in the area as compared to the state of Michigan. So look at Genesee, Macomb, Monroe, Oakland, St. Clair, and Wayne. These are counties that use Immunetrix. So all the information they're giving is public info. All the information they're giving is public. I forgot to press the button, so I apologize. So it's stuff that they pull off the state website that we have to report. But one of the things I wanted to just point out is that, take a look at Macomb County. When you begin on page eleven of this document, this will give you enrollment trends. So I'm going to go to page eleven. Because I think this is something to be very proud of. There are twenty-one districts in Macomb County, and for those who didn't know, when you look at Richmond Community Schools, our geographic area is almost the size of Utica, Romeo, Armada. When you look at the physical geography, and if you can imagine, at some point in the future, if population trends hold like they did when, in seventeen hundred, when we started in Detroit, and population trends out, how many people will be in Richmond Community Schools? Some future board is going to have to decide about building a new building, possibly on the north end of the district, much like the conversation was done in Utica and some of these other districts that continue to expand. And I say this because when you look at this period from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three, the state of Michigan has an average decline of enrollment. This isn't new. If you went to the county school board association meeting several months ago, I believe it was at Anchor Bay, they did a report on just population trends, and there, it is decreasing. So many districts who have multiple schools are looking at consolidating, closing, going for bonds and, you know, much like Romeo did, and consolidating facilities. But if you take, go look at the next chart, you can actually see, there are only three districts in the whole Macomb County that in a five-year trend have a positive enrollment growth. And that is New Haven, Richmond is number two, and Romeo. And if you look at the other districts in Macomb County, all of them have a negative growth. If this continues and stays for another five years, this is a conversation I keep saying, at some point, we're going to have to look at an addition on the middle school. Because you're going to have to accommodate that enrollment growth, and the trend is moving to the north. But when you take into consideration a five-year trend, we have a ten percent enrollment change in our, in our district, in the positive growth. If you look at some of Utica, which is the second largest district in Macomb, and in the state, they have a five, almost a five percent negative growth. You look at, you know, at the bottom, Clinton out of East Point and Mount Clemens, there's significant enrollment declines over a five-year period. So I just thought the document was pretty interesting, because as you look through each county, there's your charter schools that you have. As you look through each county, you're going to see there's not many districts that are, there are more districts in the negative enrollment group than the positive. So just a point of reference. So this is one of the pieces of information that we use to make our predictions. In your packet, you'll see two enrollment trends. One of them is going to be very hard to see, unless you enlarge it. So what I did was I took all the enrollment, I went back to two thousand fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, and everything up through February or October twenty-second is an audited number. It means that's what the county or the state, that is your official count. February, we do not have the audited number. So I'm the, you can see in this particular one, it's kind of a little hard to see, but the, in, you know, the last, first five years, the last five years, we've got more green, which means our enrollment growth is more positive, and the five years prior to that, we had several negatives enrollment growth. I'm going to use the other one, which is a better one, which is our prediction, or our enrollment production for the twenty-two, twenty-three school, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Our February count, we were down, as I reported, thirty-four students. The count is based on ten percent of your February count and ninety percent of your October count. For last October, we were up net in a blended count, sixty FTEs, which we hired a lot of people to fill them. In the October, what's predicted for the October count, this October, and when you take the blended count, we should be down twenty-eight FTEs.
And that doesn't mean twenty-eight students?
That does not mean twenty-eight.
So, because you said, you said students before, so but it's, it's FTE. It doesn't mean students.
This is FTE. Because we have students that are here, part of the day, and go to, like, for instance, if they are, they're an Armada student, they come to our AIS program, we get a part of their FTE, Armada gets a part of their FTE. We do not currently send any students outside of special ed programs to other districts. We send no students to go to our Armada program. We send no students down to the Lots Cruz. We send no students to New Haven. They are all staying in our programs that this board and, and previous boards have created and developed for students. So we can either make one or two, you can make a lot of assumptions, but if you take your current February count and you move it up, and I assume, if I assume one hundred and fifteen kindergartners, and the section thirty is ECS, the Early Childhood Specialist, seventeen FTEs, which is what we currently have, our FTE count would be fifteen fifty-three point seventy-nine for fall, fifteen fifty-five point twenty-five for last February. When you take ninety percent of this, and ten percent, and you add it together, the total comes out to be fifteen fifty-three point seventy-eight, which when you compare it to last year, would mean we're down twenty-eight, twenty-five students.
Students, no?
FTEs.
Thank you. I just want to make sure.
Yes, you are right, FTEs.
Can you clarify what an FTE is?
An FTE is when you have a student that is full-time in your district, comes all day long, they're considered one FTE. When you have students that might be out part of the time because they go to a specialized program, it might be, we've had students that go to NIS Center base for part of the day and come here, it's split. We've had students in the past go to New Haven or Lots Cruz part of the day, so that district might get point three-three, and we get point six-seven. So it adds up to one FTE, one point.
So basically, we're sharing a kid with somebody. I love the theory.
Some of these are, you might have students that, I mean, there's a variety of reasons that are on a reduced day. Sometimes kindergartners only attend half the day, and they'll get half the FTE for them. We break it down, so we see you have some general fund and special ed, and then there's a whole calculation for the special ed FTE that, the formula they use at the state. And that's what an FTE, full-time equals.
Does this reflect any dual enrollment for college, for high schoolers?
They are, they are, this would be assuming that we have the same dual enrollment students. You'll notice one of the grades I did make pink, because if I were to move that up, that's the current eighth grade going into ninth grade, we typically gain students from parochial schools that year. On average over the past, we gained about ten students. Some years it's more, some years it's less. So that's why, you know, we're going to gain something. So if I did the average, it's one twenty-one. If we just moved the one-eleven up, that number's going to be lower. So the first question is, you could, we could do this assumption and begin building the budget with, that we need to plan for being down students. And again, when you look at that previous document that I showed you, you're going to find years that we were down students. There are years that we had significant bumps. It's, the number of, you know, when you look at the number of buildings that's going on in Richmond, there's a new subdivision going in on Thirty-Two Mile Road. It will be about five years before we actually start seeing students in that. So it's a, it's a plan to, if that comes to fruition, there's a lot of students that are potentially in that area.
Well, I know when we went to the Anchor Bay meeting and stuff, you were saying how you actually look at birth rates and try to trend birth rates to know where, look to know where, looking several years ahead where we're projected. Like, in my son's grade, I know we are like super short on boards. It shows in every sports. So I know that birth, that year birth rate was like lower, which of course, there's nothing, the school district can't do anything about that. That's just, you know, economic times and stuff. But I know that's something that you said you looked at to try to project forward as well.
Correct. A lot of our districts our size use cohort, so they move kids on. Typically, kids stay here. Larger districts where you're talking 15, 20,000 students, they use a lot of birth rates and death rates in that area. And sadly, there are more people in the state of Michigan passing than, there are less kids in families now than there were previously, which is going to affect a lot of them. So, so I mean, I-
So, are you, I'm sorry. So are you, are you asking the question at this point about how you're, not picking?
The assumption.
Thank you. The assumption.
Stop with something.
This would be where the assumption we're making, if the board feels comfortable with this assumption, then this would be our starting point when we build the budget to understand how much additional revenue that we would have per pupil.
I, I would say yes, only because you haven't steered us wrong yet over the years that we've done it. No, I mean, seriously, you know, it's, I think this is a good starting point.
I, I will tell you that, because then I like to look at what is actually audited by the state. These are what was submitted, all right, in February. Our current FTE right now is about 10 FTEs higher than our audit. But just because we're higher, they got to stay here until October before we can count.
Correct.
So that doesn't mean anything because we're higher now because they take the snapshot in February. But that's what it's based on.
I would be fine with starting at this point, too. That would make something to start with, at least.
I would agree.
This, this is the FT that you're going to see throughout the presentation going forward. Again, anytime we want to, if we want to change it, it's a simple change in a spreadsheet of the number to go forward. So now that we have a FT, we can say, okay, now how do, how do we get our dollars? Well, the state of Michigan, as you know, there is a per pupil allocation that we're given. In your packet, the only budget that we have currently, and it's not even an approved budget, is the governor's budget. And in the packet that outlines the governor's budget, you're going to see where she's calling for $458 per pupil increase. There are other line items, a special ed, categorical. But our per pupil is really what you have discretion over. When you get into the categoricals, if there's a 31A increase, we're going to have an equal expense automatically. You can only spend on certain things. I'm not going to go over the whole budget. But if you want to look at the trend, that's, here's the impact. This is the one I was considering is very small. You want to look at what the district has done since 2003, that's what this document is for. And it will show you our per pupil numbers. Back in 2003, we had 2,040 FTE students. You can see years we've had lost 100, 102, 80. And then you have the years where we started to see significant increases except for this year, which is, this is the 28 student down. I'm going to use a different one to blow it, that enlarges it for you.
I think it's important to look at, too, Brian, the, the funding that we got. You go back those years, too.
Yeah, when you look at the funding, you can actually see, you know, some years we got 120, $100, 260. The last couple of years, we've gotten four, over $400. But in some years, it was flat. When you look at that one, that one-
Or minus.
About 50.
There's several years you got zero. And so when you have a flat, 0, 0, 110, you got $60 one-year increase. One year, you got, in January, $470 in the middle of the year. $50 does not even cover contractual costs. So when you're not getting a certain dollar value, it becomes, that's the importance of the fund balance. In the last two years, we have tried to charge everything to these grants and expend the grants and put as much back in the fund balance. Because at some point, because I've never seen it in my career, the state cannot, I don't see how they can sustain a 5, $400 per pupil growth, long-term.
And that's, that's on top of, you said that's a-
Top of what we're currently getting.
So here's, we got last year, we got, we, we see $9,000, $150 per pupil. That included a $450 increase from the state.
Right.
If the governor's budget holds, 458, our per pupil allocation is going to be $9,006.
And still the lowest. Still the lowest.
This is the minimum foundation a lot.
Correct.
Most districts in the state of Michigan will get that. There are some that receive 11, 12, 13,000.
14,000, some within our own county?
Yeah.
Because money isn't given fairly? Because nobody cares about public education who gives out money?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So what I, what this, what this document shows, and I apologize for the size. I wanted to show you the history. But what this document shows, if you look at the yellow column, this is the per pupil that we're, the FT that we're expecting, 1553.78. That is, that represents a 28.5 FTE reduction in large. That equates to, when you do the blended count, $450,000 in additional revenue. So what this is saying is if you take our current expenses, 21, 29 million, and we roll them over, we do nothing different, we're going to have those expenses plus any contract obligations to pay for that existing. What this number shows is you have $22 million in revenue. If we roll that forward and include the 450,000 additional revenue, that's what this number is. So when you take the difference, that's $479,000. That is a lot of money. I'm not arguing. But as you're going to see at the next board meeting, we're going to take that 479 and say, okay, in order to honor all the contracts, this is what needs to come out of that 470. The only thing that would change it is if you want to reduce people. Because then the expense is going to drop down. And this budget, as with many of the budgets in the past, we've always rolled everything over and just kept things, I wouldn't say status quo, but that's an essence. And then we adjust, okay, we know healthcare increases are going to be 4%. That's a given. It's already been published for our account. We know there are staff members who are getting pay raises after they encounter. So that's what we will start chipping away at. And so what you're going to see is that 479 will, will come down. Any questions at this point?
So when you start working the budget or start working on this, are we going to go with what we think the governor's giving us?
That is my recommendation because you, and normally I would never, I would never-
Yeah. I know, you have never.
But you have, you have a Democratic-controlled House, Senate, and governor. And they have a, as with every political party, they have an agenda. I would be shocked, and I think everybody would be shocked if we get less than that. There is a possibility that when the House and Senate release their budget, it's going to come in higher. The money is there in the state, and if you think of it this way, all the taxes that are collected in this state go into, basically two pots of money, general fund and the school aid fund. If there are less kids in the state, there is more money to allocate to school because less people are pulling from the pot. If you think of that.
That's rich. He has still some money going. You actually, you think that's true? That that's what's going to happen?
I think we're going to get that.
Okay.
I don't think there's going to be less than that. Now, if you want, and I want to show you what would happen.
Well, Brian, I just have a question about that.
Yes.
Sorry. So the, the $28,738, that's what we would currently have left over if we spent everything in our budget. So chances are, as you were saying earlier, we're going to have more money than that.
Correct.
So there, so what I'm saying is, so our, if we have more than that, then we get to add that into-
That goes into your fund.
Into our fund, right. So then we would have more than the $479,573 to work with. Is that correct?
Fund balance dollars are what you have unspent is considered one-time money.
Okay.
So it's not something that I would structurally, it would, it's basically going in your savings account. So when you do your budget, and if the expenses exceed the revenue, we're going to go to our savings account and patch the hole for this year.
So what-
But as that budget goes to the second year, you got the first hole that you patched, you took out of your saving. And if you don't make structural changes, you're going to have more expenses. And the hole's just going to get bigger, which is what-
I see.
Correct.
I see.
And the savings account, it's called a fund balance, but it's really for one-time fixing crisis. That's kind of the essence of it.
So with that, so with that being said, then, would we be looking at that, whatever that end number becomes, that's what, when we would be having the conversation as a board as to what we do with that money?
The fund balance?
Yes.
Typically, the fund balance, some of that is earmarked for the stuff you set aside.
Sure.
But typically, it's, it's not earmarked for. You could, as a board, say, okay, we're going to take-
So much out of it.
So much out of it, and we're going to spend it on this. If that's what you do, my recommendation, it doesn't become, it's not a structural, it's a one-time expense that you spend it. Because if it's structural, then you got to come up with that money again.
For the next year, sure. Okay, get it.
Which is why in some of the cases, I believe, a year ago, this past October, our fund balance came in higher as the board gave all employees kind of a one-time bonus. I don't remember off the top of my head the dollar, but we gave it. That would be a one-time. So I wanted to show you this. Because in many years, we have stated that we were going to assume zero. I'm going to enlarge it here so you can see it a little better. This is the enrollment summary that I do, and I actually project out, just so you can see, assuming things, you have a couple of more years. If things don't change, it will be down. But then we would actually start increasing our enrollment, we'd go back up. I go to 2030, 31 to keep that in the future. Let's give you a quick picture where fund balance or fund foundation FTE was, fund balance. You got to remember when we, it wasn't until FY '18, maybe '17, that we got back to where we were 10, almost 10 years ago.
Right.
And yet you still had all those increases. So, but the reason why I'm doing this is if you take this and we take this and say we're going to assume zero, that shifts our picture that we're going to have to find $260,000 of reductions to best. If you wanted to assume $50 a person. You can play around. If you want to assume 500, because you think the whole legislature is going to be wonderful throughout, that's 560. If you want to keep it at the 458, and if you want to assume next year, I mean, you could, what this does is it's a model that plays around with it. Because what I'm looking at, and I'll just assume, we have two good years of 458. I don't know where we're going to find the money. You can see if we do our enrollment projections and everything holds, you're going to have two years. I can tell you that 450, when you budget what it costs to, for the teacher contract, steps that we currently agreed to and everything, it's about $180,000 that we've got to honor. When you look at administrative costs, it's about $50,000. When you look at secretary, so it begins chipping away at that 450 real quick. That we will honor our contract, but yet still have a balanced budget. It's when you can honor the contract that we've got to go into fund balance that becomes a structural problem that we've got to really look at. And that's not, when we've been here, for those who've been on the board or sat in the audience, we've been here many years trying to figure out that budget and finding the nickel and dimes, if you will, of, you know, I remember having several conferences with administrators going through the budgets. Okay, we found $50 a year, $100 a year. And we just haven't had to do that in the last couple of years. So, so the assumption is, what I'm asking the board, are you, as a collective board, comfortable based on what you've read, what you've heard at the county school board meetings from our legislative liaison, Joe DeBolt? What I'm recommending, and I am recommending to the governors, are you comfortable with that assumption?
I am. I also am, especially after attending the budget meeting at the MISD, which I know that, you know, we attended and, some of us attended, and we'll talk about it, I think, next, next board meeting. But after seeing that presentation, I would say that I am as well.
Are you good?
I'm worried. But I'm okay.
So what you're going to see now as a collective board is we have basically $480,000 if you round up. That's what my wife tells me I can't do when I do my budget at home. If you got to round down. $480,000, we're going to start costing out what we are obligated to pay to honor the contracts we've committed to. And then that's where I was going to leave tomorrow your question. If we want to put new stuff in after we've done our, this would be the conversation to have. Or if we know something that maybe we should reduce and no longer need it, that would be that next conversation at that point. Any questions?
When will we know the governors? This last year was what?
I, I don't think you're going to have a definitive answer till after the May estimating, revenue estimating conference, which is usually, is it the weekend before Memorial Day when you go up to Mackinac Island?
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
So wait until they're all known till June?
I've been, I am surprised the House and Senate haven't released their budget at this point. Usually we have something. There's a lot of thoughts on that one, that it's just basically going to be a mimicking of the governors with some, you know, things that are unique that they want in their budget. But I don't think-
Because a lot of years we've had where we're approving our budget in June and we don't, we have no idea.
We came back in August one year. And so now we got the, we had amended.
Yep.
There was something, so, I think that was the year they surprised us. So, all right. So the, the next documents that you have, and I just, I want to make sure you can at least, you have, you'll see a document here for state grants. And again, so when we deal with state grants, it's money in from the state is going to equal an expense. So we don't have really any leeway on this. But what you're going to see in this far-right corner is assumptions of grants that we're going to get. Like, we anticipate getting, the 152 has the override. We anticipate getting the early literacy target. We anticipate getting benchmark assessment grant. 31AA, that's in the current governor's budget. And we anticipate getting at least what we got this year. The 97, which is a per pupil, we're, that's the governor's budget. We're anticipating that one. The safety risk, the critical incident, at-risk. Now, the governor's budget shows at-risk funding going up. So what this would, if that happened, that number would go up and the expense would match it going up. Again, you'll see some of the ESTER dollars, like here, ESTER 2, we will have spent all of our ESTER 2 dollars. Some of the childcare stabilization money that we've got this past couple of years, we don't anticipate getting that next year. Some of these ESTER 2, which is, you know, the older of the two, are going away. ESTER 3, you're going to see the last amount budgeted. And so, so these will be the numbers that Tammy and I will put in the budget. And then the ones that we are anticipating going away, that would go away on the revenue and the expense would equally go away. Or remember coming in, you asked for this one, so I'm hoping this answers your question. What was paid out of ESTER 2 and ESTER 3 dollars? Every district got a different allocation. This, our total ESTER 2 dollars was 778,000. We purchased a lot of laptops, if you remember, from going virtual and having one-to-one. we purchased a lot of laptops, if you remember from going virtual and having one-to-one, we put the interactive technology in the elementary classroom, we had virtual teaching stipends on the initial years, document cameras throughout, we purchased a science curriculum, and then we can charge a certain percentage of the grant to just cover the, what's called indirect cost, it's the, in the simplest terms, the people processing the stuff, it's their time that we can get back from the grant. ESTER 3, we had building COVID aids that were planned for two out of the three years, building subs we had planned for three out of the three years, a portion of the counselor, which we've been slowly taking back to general fund, instructional coach, we had retention bonuses over the course, in some contracts, it was written as an off-schedule payment, in some contracts, like the teachers' contract, it was added to their matrix, so we have that 1% of their salary being paid out of ESTER 3 still, to cover that. Again, these are just all the summer program, we just recently purchased new technology for the middle school, high school, we did solution tree professional development, we had some new cameras made install for classrooms, so, these are all the costs that we've charged to the two grant. I hope that, I think this is what you were asking.
Yes, perfect, thank you.
And with that, that's it for the budget, we have the per pupil foundation, or per pupil number, the FTE, and the per pupil foundation set, so we will now start chipping away at that other revenue. If there is something specific anybody wants, or if you know a reduction, let me know, because then we can cost it out and bring it to the board, so you have the actual number of dollars. But really, the next board meetings are going to be more discussion and direction of where you want to go at the board.
So, first off, this is really good, especially, I think, for those that have never sat in a board budget, this is good, so then, next time, what's your plan, what's the next step of, what's going to happen?
The next plan is on May 8th, we will review projected revenue increases or decreases in special ed, the MISD enhanced millage, we will also review the total of new costs for the RAA contract, the REA contract, secretarial contract, the educational care professionals contract, we'll talk about food service, but food service is not in the general fund, it's in the separate fund, and then we have a projected cost for the early learning childcare center, we are in collective bargaining with them right now, but all the other contracts are settled for at least another year, or two, or I think one is three. We'll also be talking about transportation options, whether it's a two-tier or some other, even kind of brainstorming thinking, so at that point, those will be a lot of costs next year.
And where, when does the athletic part come in?
That would be, we would start either at the end of the May or the 22nd, I feel comfortable on the 22nd.
Okay, yeah.
But on the 22nd, then, we would also talk about the school safety funding.
Okay.
The Richmond Police, as I made comment before to the board, does not have the capacity to increase, so that's some of the people, so if that's something the board, and those are options I'm going to bring to you, is increasing people, which will be covered by the grant, similar to what other districts have done, we wouldn't be looking at doing it with the Richmond Police, it would either be hiring their own or using a third party, which, again, I'll bring you those costs. At the June 12th, Tammy will present the taxation rates, because we have to get those rates to the cities and townships that make up our district, so that they can bill for the July 1 summer tax collection, and they have to have that by, I want to say the June 20th or something like that, June 15th, so that they can put it into the tax bill. But ultimately, then, on the 26th of June, 6:30 would be the presentation of the final and original budgets, when I say budgets, it's the general fund that we talked about, the debt service fund, the food service fund, and then the school activities, all the, you know, like the National Honor Society account and all that stuff, with approval at the 7 o'clock, so.
And that's the process, that's the process we have to follow, it's like the truth in budgeting.
Yeah, you have to have a special meeting called Truth in Budget, let the city or the taxpayers know, this is what their military's are going, this is what the budget and dollars are going towards.
And then we approve the budget at the regular meeting?
You have till June 30th to approve a balanced budget. And there is a possibility that we may not have per pupil allocations, so we're just going by assumptions at that point.
And then, like you said, if that's the case, when we come back in August, that's when that conversation, because by August, it'll
Correct.
Hopefully.
And by August, we'll also have, if there's anything left over from the bond as well?
You know, when I talked to Jerry from OCH, they're anticipating August would be the dollar, we know if there was any significant things that came up over the summer progress, we'd have an understanding of what bond dollars are left, so we can then reallocate what's left. And then the list of things that we've been adding that have come up, like features and walls, and some other little things that we have been putting on the to-do list for future.
Some restroom updating, maybe?
We can put that on there, that's, you know, the cost of, you can't, you, I don't, I'm going to make a, so, I don't think you'll have any money to renovate, you may have money to
High school updating.
Tile, it's pretty expensive, but, yeah.
We did have, we already did have a presentation regarding that, though, right? Like, we, we already do have that in our package somewhere.
Do we have it just a blanket, like, update, like a fresh coat of paint and a fresh, you know, not a whole renovation?
You can't use bond dollars for painting?
I think ours was renovation.
Oh, got you.
You have to do some type of renovation
It still would have to be.
Bond dollars, so.
Can't just be, yeah.
But that would be, that would be the time to do that discussion.
Fine, okay.
And that's separate from-
As a district, you have plenty of time to spend those last dollars.
Oh, okay. They don't put a limit on that?
Um, they do, but because we went for the gusto, we've got, we've got a couple, two more years that we can still spend the last for bond dollars.
Oh, well, great, yeah. We kind of moved really quickly.
Which, thank goodness we did, because what other districts are facing now in cost increases?
Costs, yep.
We got, we had a really good deal. I mean, we hit it, the timing was perfect, so.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I just want to reiterate what Ryan said, as we go through this process, if you don't understand something, or you have questions, please make sure you get ahold of him, you know, when, during the next meeting, so that, because this is going to just keep building, and you need to know your basics before you can move on, okay?
And this is the most important thing we do.
It is.
This is our function.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent district and legislative update.
Okay, I'm going to start, on the last meeting, there was no public comments that asked to be responded to, so I didn't call anybody. Legislative update, we don't currently have a sinking fund, but it might be something the district looks at in the future, but on last Thursday, the House and Senate, the House passed the Senate Bill 63, which allows
Which would allow the sinking funds to be used to purchase transportation bus vehicle. Many districts have a sinking fund, which gives them a revenue stream that helps in some capital projects and so forth, again, Richmond does not have a sinking fund, I don't plan on bringing you a proposal, but it is something that would give a district a lot more leeway on spending those dollars. The Senate passed what's called Filter First legislation, which we're watching very closely, the Senate Bill 89, to create your clean drinking water access, it would require students, schools to not only have developing drinking water safety plan, which we do, we have, we annually flush out our pipes and test their water for any lead, et cetera, and they have passed, so we have no issues, but it also would require districts to put hydration stations and other water filters in place in the school by the end of the 24, 25 school year. The interesting part of this legislation is it basically exempts schools if there's no appropriation by legislators to put money towards it, so you're not held to this if the legislators don't put money. We have started that process, we put the filling stations at the middle school, we currently, under state building code regulate, cannot take out all the drinking funds, you still have to have the traditional drinking funds, the codes have not updated with the times, so you have so many drinking funds, so. There's a lot of bills that are addressed on right-to-work legislation that we are watching, that are in the hover, and I think a lot of them are going to move very quickly, so it will have, in the future, I'll go over those impacts with you. Just a reminder for those that are attending the School Board Association Dinner meeting tomorrow, it's tomorrow at the ISD, I already asked repeat, so we are all set to go, if your schedule permits, they always are welcome, they're big deals once you go. Couple things, at Lee Elementary School, Science Alive was truly a hit, the staff and students loved it, some special thanks to the Lee PTO for putting that on, if you saw the Facebook post of Mrs. Manguni, Mr. Gibson, Ms. Pinsky, and Mrs. Klein with the seven-foot snake on, and I didn't kudos, but I couldn't do that, so, but the sloth and the snake were favorites among the students and staff. They're planning a color run on Wednesday, June 7th, some Orientals will be sent home. Last week, they had a great turnout for Donuts with Grown Ups on Wednesday, April 19th. Congratulations to the Lee Green Club under Ms. LaGroy, Ms. Wilson, we went to the annual Green School Awards Breakfast Blanket last week, they earned Emerald Award for the 22, 23, which is the second highest honor, those green Emerald Evergreens, they're one of the second highest honor. For those that have three-year-olds and four-year-olds, graduation caps and tassels have arrived, the ceremonies will be on June 1st at 9:00 AM for the four-year-old, excuse me, June 1st at 9:00 AM for the three-year-olds, and June 1st at 1:00 PM for the four-year-old, both are in the auditorium at the high school. Middle school, their Green Club also won some awards, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Waller, leave that, they also attended the award, they earned the Evergreen status, which is the highest, congratulations to the middle school, just helping our students and all of us think environmentally, and how that's helped our planet. Speaking of the planet, they celebrated Earth Day last week, they did it a day earlier because of the rain on Friday, but they, they stowed the school spirits, wearing clothing and accessories about that are on our planet, they did a cleanup outside on the campus, and they did a really nice job, there was a lot of trash from the winter and stuff that just kind of got blown around. Again, kudos to Mrs. Campo, she was recognized as our county teacher of the year, that was already previously mentioned, it really is a great night, because there's a lot of positives going on in public education, and this just helps us redirect our focus to making sure, refocus on that. You mentioned Nathan Peir was recognized at the Allo County Academic banquet, the CTE students went to Comerica Park last week, they heard from several speakers in the sports industry about marketing and business, they also got to see a Tiger game, I don't even know if they wanted the Tigers that came to end the, promising the football game, but they got to enjoy the game, meet the paw, they even got some autographs, so they really had a really good time. And then finally, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Staples, she's got some exciting news to share with you.
I gave you guys two flyers to take a look at today, first one is Wellness Wednesday has come to Richmond, so we contracted through Richmond Wildflower Yoga, and they come out to us twice a day on Wednesdays to be able to do yoga, to help relieve stress, focus on like breathing techniques, and just overall wellness and movement, so our session begins at 6:15 in the morning for all of us early birds, and then there's an after-school session at 3:15 to 4:15, you guys are all more than welcome to come on down and have fun with us, it's actually a really fun, great thing, we have let a lot of employees come and say, this is my new thing, I'll see you next week, and they all had a great time, so.
You get a mat, you get a yoga mat?
That's right.
I'm a bitchy yoga mat, but this era, I went last Wednesday at 6:15, and you can adjust to what they tell you to do. But it really does, it does wander through the mind.
Yeah.
Refresh me, if you're ready.
It was neat, the second thing we have is something brand new that we're starting this summer, is the Teacher Toolbox Summer Workshop Series, and this was the idea that, you know, we would love to be able to have professional development sessions over the summer for the teachers who want to get a head start before the rest of the school year, these courses that you see on our calendar, these were actually proposals done by Richmond teachers, so this professional development series is professional development for Richmond teachers by Richmond teachers, so all of these sessions were proposals, we're going to be able to get sketches, the workshop grade, and they're going to be able to come down, get a head start on some of our new things for the year, being able to learn something new, analyzing NWEA data, some of our Richmond things, such as School G Power School Plan Book, sneak peek of new math, pretty much possible, oh, you see some fun new things that we have heading our way next year, such as accelerated reader, getting a head start, Hagan, so lots of great things that we have, so bravo to all the teachers that put in these proposals, and I hope to see you guys all in the summer, because I'll be there.
That's great. Are the teachers teaching them, the seventy?
Yeah.
Very nice.
And some of our administrators as well.
Outstanding, that's great.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, next item on our agenda is items of interest from the board, I'm going to go backwards up with that, but not with.
No, I did my rave, that's all I got.
Danielle?
I'm all set.
Angela?
I'm all set, thank you.
Kelly?
Nope, I'm all set.
Me?
I'm all set.
Sandy?
Nope, nothing today.
And Candace?
I'm welcome, thank you.
Okay, next item is our public comments, right, no, sorry.
No.
Excuse me. It is our action items, so our first action item is the approval of band and choir overnight extended trip request to Chicago, Mr. Wenzel.
So last board meeting, Mrs. Chlor and Mrs. Shaq presented a proposed trip to go to a music clinic, as well as attend some parties in Chicago, since that meeting, I didn't call, so by recommendation to approve it.
I'm looking for a motion?
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight trip request by Stacy Chlor, middle school, high school choir director, and Molly Shaq, middle school and high school band director, for high school band and choir students to attend a band and choir clinic at Vandercook College of Music, and to attend a musical in Chicago, Illinois, from November 3rd to November 4th, 2023.
Do I have support? Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Any discussion?
Um, I, yes, I would just like to say that I will abstain from this, being that I have two children in the program and a part of the booster.
Oh, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So, should I have as well, I mean, let's use this as a learning lesson, because I also have my daughters in band and choir.
No. It's high school.
But I'm not going, oh, because she's going.
And, and I'll be, she's part of the boosters too, so there's a, there's a, could be a monetary, because she's trying to fundraise. Raise funds and that, so she backs away from that, you don't have to.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. That was our learning moment for the night.
Yep.
Looking for the approval of a volleyball overnight extended student trip request to Chicago, Mr. Wenzel.
Last board meeting, Mr. Tron presented a request for volleyball program by Coach O'Quinn, to, for volleyball program to attend Hillsdale College in Hillsdale, Michigan, to attend a volleyball camp, really my recommendation to approve the truck.
I'm looking for a motion?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the overnight trip request by Charlene West, volleyball coach, via Preston Tron, Director of Athletics Facilities and School Safety, for the volleyball program to attend Hillsdale College in Hillsdale, Michigan, for a volleyball team camp from July 9th, 2023, through July 11th, 2023.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, our next item is approval of childcare furniture, Mr. Wenzel.
As mentioned at a previous board meeting, the district has received the childcare stabilization funds, and some of those funds are being used for the outdoor classroom, some of the funds are being used to credit back families on their bill, but a portion of the funds we allocated or were budgeted for replacing and upgrading the furniture in the childcare room, so, before you is a request to purchase new furniture for the childcare program at Lee Elementary School.
I'm looking for a motion, I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approval to purchase of childcare furniture from school specialty for a total of $18,278.88 plus shipping and handling, as outlined in the attached documentation, which funding is from the fiscal year 2023 general fund. from the fiscal year 2023 general fund as authorized.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
The quote that you have in your binder had taxes, we won't be paying the taxes, it's just the shipping and handling, the cost. Yeah.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Kelly?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Our votes. A motion carries. Okay, now we are to public comments. Since the last board meeting, I did not receive any new emails. I do wish to address just a couple points from the teachers' comments at the last board meeting. Sorry. I'm not used to having to push the button. We'll get used to it. So I wish to address the teachers' comment made at our last meeting during public comments. This person stated that they are taking an $8,000 pay cut next year. I first want to state that as a board, we are not making any pay cuts. Under the teacher contract, every teacher is required to have a prep hour. This teacher currently teaches six hours with no prep. Because of this, she receives an extra 1/6 of pay for teaching on her prep. Next year, the high school will be going to a seven-period day, which was voted on and approved by the teacher union. This teacher will have a prep hour next year, so she will not be receiving the extra 1/7 of pay. I'd also like to comment that there, yes, we do have staff that are helping some of our new teachers and our teachers working on certification. However, they too are receiving a stipend. However, there are also some teachers who are doing it without pay. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Just turn it on. I'm Charlene West, I'm the varsity volleyball coach, and I apologize for not being at media last week or a couple weeks ago, but I brought some players with me that have gone to the Hillsdale College volleyball camp the last two years. Since I've been coaching every July, Hillsdale College is my alma mater, that's where I went, and I actually coached at Hillsdale High School for years, I lived there for a long time. And we've gone to the team camp, it has been a phenomenal experience, and I thought it would be fun, one of my players ended, but just to let my players tell you a little bit of what it's about and what they get out of it.
Um, yeah, so we get to stay in the dorms, and it's a really cool experience, just like see what it would be like, it's like be at college, and we get, it's more than just volleyball, too. Like, it's fun to bond with our teammates and everything, because we have volleyball in the afternoons, but in the morning, we even get to do other fun activities like yoga, ballet, mountain biking, anything like else we can choose from. So it's really cool.
And some of the activities in the morning, they do mental toughness, where they talk to the kids about mentally, different things that occur and how they can mentally stay focused. They have injury prevention, so the kids get to learn to work with bands and how they can prevent injuries. They have jump training. What are some other things that you use? They have a big ball challenge. I really should send some pictures that they get, they run a CM volleyball court, they have this big ball that takes five of them to try to push over the net, but when they're trying to get it, it's rolling backwards and they can't get it, so it's kind of fun that they're playing each other. So it's a lot of team building, and it's a positive experience. So I just wanted to say a little bit about what they get out of it. And I also wanted to bring up, I heard some positive things about baseball and basketball, that the two players that I had to, this is Elena Essalink, and I also had Kenzie Chato that was here, we have ran a club volleyball program that I started two years ago for our 10U and 12U kids, and they both have been part of, they don't get paid to come help me coach, but they come because we have so many girls there. And we have had, we're 30 girls this year that come and play, and we go to tournaments locally in the area. Unfortunately, we don't have any that are close. St. Clair was our closest tournament, we have to go to Mount Boris, or we have to go to Ibsalani, but we do have a request in to see if we can get some gym time, unfortunately, it's a premium here, just to be able to host so that our 10U and 12U kids can play, and that's an AAU program. So I'm very thankful that I have awesome senior volunteers who are also in National Honor Society, so we can come as volunteer hours, and they volunteer all summer. So we run camps at Brentford, and they volunteer. So if any of you have questions about the camp, I thought they could answer them. I appreciate you guys for proving that they're nice.
Sounds exciting, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the.
Yeah, thank you.
Write our name on the.
Would you just put your name down, please?
Have fun.
Any other public comments?
I wasn't here at the last meeting, because I had to have hip surgery, so I got to watch the meeting on YouTube. And I'm going to read a few things to you. This is going to be weird, whatever. I wouldn't even bother. I know. That's the guy right there in the hallway. We should have done the same. Those were all things you could hear board members saying while all of our teachers got up here and spoke to you all. All of which was extremely disrespectful and unprofessional. Whether it was relevant to what was being said or not does not make it acceptable. You all expect us to be respectful and keep our mouths shut while you all speak. So when we speak, we deserve the same. With the behavior during last meeting and many others, this just shows us that everything anyone speaks about during public comment falls on mostly deaf ears. Fix the behavior. I request that from now on during public comment, that the camera stays zoomed out, so everyone can see each and every board member's reaction to public comment. And maybe that will finally put an end to the childish eye rolls and nasty looks that we all receive. Our teachers go above and beyond to keep our district from crumbling to the ground. Why not accept our temporary fix to the problem, to hold things afloat for them, until everyone can come to an agreement? It blows my mind that thousands of dollars become available on general funds because of a grant, and yet our teachers still can't even get any, any form of help from any of you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, we will move on. We, we have a closed session. I'm looking for motion for a closed session for the purpose of negotiations pursuant to Section 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Pursuant to Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act, I move the Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of negotiation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. For those who are sitting out here, we will be only returning back to adjournments.